And we are now in our workshop budget update. And Ms. Tammy, who did you negotiate with to get in front of Mr. Bishop?
I won't say. I said age before beauty, so. All right, so I'm just going over general fund and then Johnny sent it over to capital with you, so.
Do we have that printed out or not?
No, not printed out yet. Well, send it to Lisa and she'll get you a copy. So what has happened so far? We've met with the administrators, district and school administrators. They've all prepared their project budgets, their school budgets. We've had, as you can see, one, two, three pushes of the HR budget over the June 13th. When we were supposed to do the third one, we actually pushed it early. We pushed it to May. And then at this point, we are at the preliminary budget is being presented to the school board. All right, pretty much this is the same as it was at the last meeting. Nothing's changed. We haven't got a second calculation yet. You know, our FTE is going up slightly. We're still not at the numbers we were like in nine, 10, or 10, 11. We're barely to where we were in 11, 12 in our numbers, but we're growing a little bit. And this is just graphically the previous slide. So as you see the dip and we're headed back up. So here we add in the base funding and this shows you the, you know, we had a decrease and then it slightly has increased. I just got back from my conference. They're saying, you know, this is the most money we've gotten in 10 years. So we are up to $4,279 for the base student allocation, which is up 2.39% from last year.
And Ms. Wilson, well, I know that's been said and it'll be said and I'm not gonna, I mean, the budget was not bad with where we got funded at all. It gave a lot of good stuff to it. But I know that there's been also a lot of conversation to say when you go back to like 2008, funding levels, that's not even taking into consideration cost of living and gross national, what do you call it, production and other factors that often show the dollars of value.
Right.
And that when you factor that in, it's actually even significantly worse than what it is. So while the funding levels are often based on the FTE numbers, because it's saying, well, we've also grown as a state in population. It's not necessarily that correlation. And our dollar, our buying power is much less today in everything than it was even in 2008 as well.
Yes, and that's, you know, they kind of, this is how they, the DOE presented it, you know, in the last 10 years, but they forget about the years before that when we were being funded much better than we are now. So there was a big cut and then they've kind of slowly given us money back. So, and this figure does include the best and brightest in our FEFP this year, which we'll go on to them in the next couple of slides. And that has always been separate, so. Here's a graphical depiction. This is the base student allocation versus the total funding. How that, you know, kind of goes in line with each other. So that's just graphically the slide before. Here again, we have the breakout of the FEFP, our property value. On the conference report, the taxable value was at $10,575,000 million. And I'm gonna have a slide coming up to show you what the June 1st figures were from the property appraiser. Overall, you see the total FEFP funding here. We went up 2.383 million and 1.467 of that was best and brightest, which we used to get anyway. So, you know, we have to keep that in mind. And this is just bringing in our taxable monies. You could see if you go to the bottom, the local funding, we are up about a million dollars in tax revenue, which really is not a huge amount, but it's something, so.
Is that, that's the general fund capital or just the general?
This is just your general fund.
I'm the general.
This is just, this is your FEFP.
But the million dollars is based on both the increase in FTE as well as the increase in the DSA?
This is just, this million dollars is your local funding, not your tax dollars. So that's based on property value and the millage rate.
Which was also rolled back up above. So in essence, almost everybody's tax bill will show they are funding the schools less per person.
Yes, less millage, their property values are up. So it'll probably end up to them if they just look at the dollar figure and they're not actually looking at the value of their property. To them, it's gonna look like they're paying more.
But the dollar figure usually shows less.
Right, so I have that on the. It's going to increase, yes. And that's what this next slide is. I have the fourth calculation where we were with our taxable value, the conference report when it came out, and then the June 1st estimate that they gave. We went up from $10,575,000 to $10,904,000. All right, so that would increase by about 1.5 million overall. But then they adjusted other ways in the state funding on the FEFP, so.
And that's what I, you know, the public thinks that because we increased, you know, 500 million, that we're getting the benefit of that. We get it on the capital side.
Right.
But we, the legislature then adjusts it and only gives us what the legislature gives us. We don't get a bonus in our operations.
Right, the millage went from 4.079 down to 3.915. So they decreased our millage.
So if the solar plant increases, we're still not gonna see the benefit of that if the legislature doesn't allow it.
Right, if they don't increase our millage, right.
Except on the capital.
Except on the capital.
We'll see a little bit, yeah.
And our .748 discretionary.
But we already, when you look at our capital 10 years ago, we had two mills and Duke, which was huge.
Right, so this second to bottom, the discretionary local effort, we do see an increase there because that's .748 that you vote on at the budget hearing. You vote to levy that. That is, you have the discretion to, we've always voted for the whole 7.748. So, you know, we do get a little increase with that. But the required local effort really stays about the same, so. And I'll get, in July 1st, they'll send the certified taxable values. We'll plug in everything to the TRIM. And then we'll be able to determine if we're going to have to advertise for a tax increase, even though our millage is down. Could happen what happened last year where with the rollback rate, we're still collecting more overall revenue. So we'll know when they send us the value in July 1st, whether we advertise for a tax increase or we're just advertising our normal tax. So that'll come to you at the next, at the board meeting in July. So here's a graphical depiction. And as you see, the blue is the taxable value, the red is the millage. So see how the value is going up, but that red line is going down. So in, I can barely see this, 11, 12 it looks like. That's about our highest mark for millage there. And we were at, I can't read that, I'm sorry. Eight, eight, and we're down to six. And that's with our .748 and our 1.5 in there. So that's pretty much what Mr. Kenny was just saying to us. So here's the budget broke out. These are the different types. We have our required local effort, our discretionary, the capital improvements, the red. And then 10 years ago, for four years, we levied a critical capital outlay. So we haven't, that we could do for four years and we did it back then. So as you can see, this blue, the highest one, it's gone down, down. And it's going up a little bit, but not a whole lot. It's kind of tapered out the last five years. So here's our budget, our budgeted taxes to what we have collected. And we will get the May collection. We will receive probably Thursday. I've added that in there. So we're almost at 100%. So by the time we get that, the month of June, we receive those revenues in July, we should be over 100% collection, like, which we normally are. All right, so on May 14th, when I came to you at the board meeting, this is the budget that we presented. We were at 3.10. And at that time, we talked to you about your priorities and where we could cut. So since then, these are the cuts that we have made. In school safety, we've made no cuts. In hiring retaining qualified staff, so basically teacher positions, we have made no cuts. Technology support, we went ahead and put the tech aids on hold, the four tech aids, at a savings of $175,000. Those positions had not been posted yet, so we just put those on hold at that time. We also had requested for some bus aids. They had not been posted, so we put those on hold. That's another $50,000. We cut out Alex for the high schools, which is a math program. And we achieved 3,000 is ELA, but the education foundation, Ms. Hemel, went to them and they're going to fund that for us. So that's still a savings to our general fund, yes. The director of secondary education was cut and with benefits and all that, that's about $110,000. Our FISBIT insurance, from what we have budgeted, the property side, we were able to save about 110. We cut the coordinator of risk management, which was about 105 with benefits. And then workers' comp insurance, which was part of the whole FISBIT and just how everything got allocated, we were able to save about 150. And I think if I totaled right real quick in my head, it's about $775,000 in savings. So now, here's our budget today that I present to you. We're looking a little bit better to end this year, a little bit better. And that number that, in the yellow column, the net change of using 800,000, I'm still hoping by the time everything washes out, we might end up a little bit better than that. It'd be nice if we didn't have to use any of our fund balances this year, but I don't foresee that happening. And then we move into the blue column, which is our budget for next year. And bottom line, we're looking at about 3.6 for our fund balance. So we're within our policy, we're within statute, we need everything. So with those cuts, we were able to come, we'll use about 2.8 of our fund balance next year. So those were the cuts that we made since the board meeting in May.
Ms. Wilson, can you go back to the previous slide?
Yes.
The, I mean, these are very logical. But when I look at the secondary ed and I look at the coordinator of risk management, we just know those are not sustainable. I mean, we, you guys are, I know, triaging again. But I would just remind this board and remind the public, that's on top of cuts we already have had in those divisions. And those are divisions that directly support safety and security as well as academic excellence within our schools. So I know we're here. And I'm not saying that there's anything we can do about that, but I think we have to recognize that's not sustainable. So I just feel like that needs to be lifted out.
Tammy, when you stop at this slide, do you have the 900,000?
No, there's no shine, there's no shine money in here, this, because we did this before.
So that would increase your revenues by 900,000, but also increase your expenses.
Right, so that's kind of a zero wash.
But I would say that because when you look at that, you know, our plan right now is to use 2.8 million dollars of the fund balance to make this year's demands. And then there's an extra 900,000 dollars gonna be added to that with that shine money. So when you talk about next year, we're already almost $4 million behind, or something's gotta go. So everything we're putting in with that shine money this year is great. I agree with it, but there's no money to sustain it next year.
Right.
So it would either be cut or something else would be cut to pay for it.
Maybe the Florida legislature will. If you do such a great job. And we're going to do a great job.
And Mr. Mullins still.
Mrs. Mullins, that's a straight face.
We're going to do a great job and we'll let them know that.
Do we know though, if for some reason we can't hire all of those people, what happens to those? Does that resource just sit there until, as a categorical, because we can't spend it until other than that area?
Yeah, I have not been, I cannot answer that because I haven't been given all the details yet of even how we're drawing it down or what we have to do with that, so I think.
It wasn't until late Friday we realized.
We, then it would, yeah.
Right, yeah.
And again, maybe it will work out, but I just, you know, we need to keep that in back of our mind because I'll be honest with you. I'm out of administrators to cut.
Yeah, well, that's really what I mean by that sustainable.
Out of all what we have to do, I just wanted to let our representatives and our senators know that with the shine money, look the great things we're doing. Every chance we get, we need to let them know that so that they might consume next year.
Mr. Dodd, did you have something? You're leaning in, I do want to give you an opportunity.
No, I was just.
Sorry, I apologize.
No, 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 I keep, I just didn't want to go past until.
So then I always like to show you this graph, which is where our fund balance was. And, you know, in 2010, we were at about 18 million. Now we're down to a little over 6. So, but the red and the blue line are getting closer together and that's the difference between our restricted and our unrestricted. You know, and we have to restrict certain funds because we can't, we can't use them for whatever. We have to use them for the use they're intended. And WTC was a big portion of that. They are having to use a lot of their restricted funds because their funding was cut last year. And then they've, they got the same amount coming up here than they did last year, but still they're, you know, we're grateful they had those reserve funds to help them get through and they're spending some of that, so.
And I know the board understands this, but sometimes the public doesn't. They look at the big figure and think that that's how much money we have in reserves.
Right.
That's not money you have access to to do what you, that's money that's earmarked for certain things, that have to be spent on certain things, whether that's K funds or workforce money. But it's not money that the district can use just as the district wants to. So it's not really your reserve money. That's why it's separated. But when people just look at that one figure, they think, oh, well, you've got all that money sitting in the bank. It's not the case.
So this compares our revenues to expenditures with the blue being the revenues, the red being the expenditures and just kind of, so you can see, you know, that most of the time we are spending more than we're bringing in.
Which means we're living off of our fund balance.
We're living off of our, hence the 18 million down to 6.
And that's, I just wanted.
I know some of that, you know, Duke wasn't there and some of that, but we had that to help us get through that. And, you know, I'd love to be able to retire one day and us have 18 million again in our fund balance. So that would be, you know, awesome if we could get there. All right, so what are our next budget processes? Like I already spoke to you, July 1st, the property appraiser will certify the taxable value. On July 9th, you will approve to advertise for the tentative budget. And then we will get another push from human resources. So that'll get us even closer to where we actually will be. Hopefully we'll have more warm bodies in vacant positions. We'll have the shine positions in there, I would think at that time. And then at some point, the DOE will provide the second calculation. The DOE actually hadn't even posted the first one because the governor hadn't officially signed the budget. So they're already working on the second and the first one hadn't even been, you know, published. So they kind of made a comment about that at conference too. We will advertise the budget in the paper July 27th. And that will notify the public that we are having a hearing on the 30th. So again, I will remind you that that's the fifth Tuesday that we'll be having that. And that'll be at 5:30 will be the public hearing for that. We'll also review the five-year work plan. It doesn't get approved at that time, but we'll also review that at that meeting. So that's all I have for general fund at this point. The budget process is just kind of any new things that come in, like this shine, we'll put those monies in. You know, positions, as those fill, we'll be tighter on our HR budget, knowing exactly what we have. As you can see, we're above our policy. We still don't have a lot of wiggle room. We don't really have a lot of free money to do anything with, but we are sustaining ourselves right now. So at this point, it's just kind of adding and subtracting the little bits that come in. And when the second calculation, we'll put those back out and you'll approve that at the end of July. Are there any questions?
Well, I just pointed out for Mr. Kennedy, for our chairman, so, and I know we've all said this is the way we're gonna do, but just to remind everyone that that July workshop, or that July 30th is the fifth Tuesday. So we'll be having a regular meeting on the 9th, right, of July, let's see.
Yes, July 9th.
The second Tuesday and then the fifth Tuesday. We won't be meeting on the 23rd.
Correct, right, okay.
Just the 30th.
And I think that's pretty much how we've usually had to do it. But so if anybody's wanting to take a week off on the 23rd, they should go, they should feel comfortable or say at least, you know.
We just like to, that gives us the better, that gives us a better budget. We're closer to where we really will be in September. So, you know, oh, there's one more slide, see? So after that meeting, we, the millage rates, I have to submit after you guys approve those. I submit that to the property appraiser in the TRIM process. We'll have a final HR push right when school starts. And you'll get your tax notices in the mail. And then we'll approve the final budget on September 10th. And then I have stuff I have to do after that. Submit it to TRIM and submit it to the property appraiser and submit to the DOE. So like I said, from now until September 10th, which is our final actual approved budget, it's just kind of adding and subtracting the little things that come in, so.
You make it sound so easy.
Well, sometimes big things happen in the in-between time, but we're kind of, we don't have a lot of room to do anything with right now. And we've gotten our FISBIT bill. You know, we bit out garbage yesterday, that'll be coming to July. So all those budgeted items, we've kind of, we kind of have good figures now. So it's been a lot of work up until now, getting those good solid figures. Are there any questions on general fund? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bishop.
Now for the fun stuff, right? Okay, yeah, I appreciate having the opportunity to come before you today to give you an update on the capital budget. Before I even show you the next slide, I want you to know, we're gonna make it work. It's all gonna work. The numbers I'm gonna show you today, I think, will probably be of somewhat of surprise to the board or some members of the board. However, the purpose of today's meeting is to bring awareness to our current reality and to look at the projections in the out years, okay? This is not a doom and gloom situation. We're not gonna let it be that. We're gonna be, Citrus County, as we've always been, Citrus County schools, and we're gonna make it work regardless of what's been presented to us, okay? So with that having been said, the purpose is to give you a summary of our current reality and to look at the projections as we move forward over the next five years. My hope is that we look at the capital budget, the current reality and the projections, and we start to have, begin having discussions as to how we need to alter our spending habits of the capital fund, because we are looking on the capital fund reserve. Make no mistake about it. So we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where we have a catastrophic event like our friends to the north had this past year and total devastation and not have the funds necessary to get up and running as quick as we possibly could. So we just wanted to begin the process of discussing the issues. The capital budget, there's a lot of hands that are in the cookie jar, so to speak. Here are some of them, you know, our debt services with the bond repayment, the technology department, information services, co-compliance planning, vocational classroom furniture and property casualty insurance. Those areas all have an interest in the capital budget as the capital budget funds a lot of what they do. But for today's purposes, I want to focus on three areas. I want to focus on maintenance, facilities and construction and transportation. I spoke with Ms. Androski yesterday. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here today to talk about technology as she's out of town at a technology conference. But she said she wanted me to share with the board that she will come before the board in the upcoming board meeting to give you a forecast in terms of technology as well. But for today's purposes, once again, maintenance, facilities and construction and transportation are areas of focus. Before we go any further, I also want to say that we're not talking today about any of the additional safety initiatives that we have going on. Those are above and beyond what we're talking about today. The conversation today needs to focus around continuity of basic services and that's what we want to focus on.
Because like you said, it didn't even include security, which is a huge animal there.
Absolutely, a lot of the security initiatives that we have underway are not included in what we're talking about here today. But before we move forward, I think we have to go backwards a little bit. And I want to talk to you about how we got to where we are. Back in 2007, the school district hired a consultant, MGT of America, to come in and conduct some facility assessments at all of our schools. They came in January of 2007. Then they came back to assess our progress in September of 2010. And then they came once again in October 2012 to update the board as to the progress that the district had made and addressing some of the deficiencies that were originally discovered or identified in 2007. During these assessments, they assessed each of our schools in educational suitability, technology readiness and site grounds conditions. In 2007, it was a recommendation of MGT that we addressed the priority one, recommendations were that we address Christopher Primary School with the renovation and remodeling project, which as we all know, we've done that. They suggested that, they listed as a priority one that we address Christopher High School, which we have completed phases one and two of that project. And then also that we needed a new elementary school up in the north part of the county, which has been addressed with Central Ridge Elementary School. Also in 2007, when they rated our schools for educational suitability, they rated Full City Elementary School, Embers Primary School and Embers Middle School below the 80-point suitability score. And at that time, they rated each of those schools as being poor in terms of educational suitability. So as we talk today about the capital needs and the reality of our capital budget, we can't forget the conversations we've had since that date all the way back to 2007 in that Full City Elementary School is in need of some attention. Embers Primary School is in need of attention as well as Embers Middle School. So the conversations we've had over the last handful of years, they've been driven by this data. They've been driven by this third-party consultant to come in and assess our schools. So those conversations have been on target, both with staff and with the board. Also in 2007, the recommendation they left us with was that we need to assess the facilities that had a score that felt less than 80, that scored less than 80%. And those three schools were the ones that were identified at that time. In 2007, they identified those schools and they put a cost figure to the renovation and remodeling of those schools. And at that time, Full City Elementary School was $2.1 million, Embers Primary School at $5.8, and Embers Middle School at $2.1 million. When they came back in 2010, they had to recalculate those figures because of course, cost of services had increased. So you can see the corresponding costs as they increased. One thing I want to, the one thing I want to lift out to the board is if you recall, about three years ago, we had a master plan developed for the remodeling and renovation of Full City Elementary School. And in that master plan, it was upwards of $10 million. So the cost for services from the time the MGT came in and conducted the original assessments of our facilities till now, those costs are skyrocketing. And that's just a common theme that we hear in all areas of business, particularly in construction and maintenance and construction. Also in 2010, it was the recommendation of MGT that we replace those classrooms, the portables that were used in the classrooms on any campus where the number of portables eclipsed 10% of the overall total number of classrooms. And at that time, Full City Elementary School, their portable rate was 35%. Portables made up 35% of their. And at that time, Full City Elementary School, their, their portable rate was thirty five percent. Portables made up thirty five percent of their, uh, of their classrooms and that's still the case today. So the conversations we've had have been very warranted. They have been data driven and that's how we do everything here in Citrus County is we base everything on data. So those conversations are well placed. Um, moving forward to October of two thousand twelve, MGT came back and they once again. Um, rated those three facilities, uh, as priority number ones and with specific areas to address in their assessment. That was the update in, uh, two thousand twelve. I shared that with you because a lot of that has driven our conversations and decisions over the years. And that brings me to this form and I apologize. I know that's very small, but I was trying to fit a lot of information on a very small piece of paper, but I want to make it very simple because I'm a simple minded kind of person. The top part of that sheet that Ms. Wilson has so articulately educated me on, the top part is the amount of money we have coming in. The bottom part is how much money we're spending. So if I can direct your attention to the far right column, the, uh.
And that's the amount we're spending in a five-year plan.
It's over five years. It's an average over the five years. It's an average over five years. So if I can direct your attention to the far right side of the sheet, the, uh, the number that's in green, um, uh, green font. That's the average annual amount of revenue that we have coming in. It looks, appears to be seventeen million, uh, seven hundred thousand and change. Then if I can redirect your attention down to the bottom, the, uh, the numbers that's in blue, that's the amount of money we're spending every year. Once again, I'm a simple, simple kind of guy. We're bringing in seventeen point seven, we're spending twenty point five. We're running a hole about two point seven million dollars a year. So if we look even closer, um. At our capital budget right now, we have a twenty six million dollar fund balance. Over the next five years, that's going to decrease down to about thirteen million dollars. Uh, if we do not change the way we're doing business as far as, uh, capital expenditures. I'm sorry. Uh, that bond will be paid on April of twenty twenty seven.
So this is. Mr. Bishop in here does not include. The recent, the recent trend numbers are telling us that we're gonna have a continual increase in the number of students and there's even some. Some projections that are very concerning if they were to take place because we don't have any resources. For a Pine Ridge. Elementary school that would be potentially necessary within that area. That's about a twenty million dollar. That's not even anywhere in here. As well as Floral City, I, IMS IPS. Um, and IMS, as we all know too, we increase our, our numbers. We've got to put those students somewhere and IMS is already, you know, our largest, we're almost the size of a high school. Uh, so the challenge is there to get better.
That is correct. And another thing that's not included on this sheet, down in the facilities and construction, uh, area, those budgets are factored in, you know, within five, in the five out years. We use an inflation rate of between two and three percent. Orange County has now began a practice of, because of cost of services are outpacing. Cost of living, if that makes any sense, they're actually using a factor of seven percent. So we're gonna be somewhere between what we have and what they have, but our numbers may be a little shallow in the facilities and production budget as you see it here today. Okay? So what does all this mean? Talking kind of fast, a lot of numbers out there. What's it really mean? This is our current reality. We have till April twenty twenty seven to, uh, pay off the bond at Christopher High School. Uh, the cost of services are increasing considerably each and every year. The reality is our infrastructure is failing. We have systems that are failing. Um, we're talking about plumbing. A lot of people don't think about plumbing. People think, when they think plumbing, they think water fountains, sinks and, and, and toilets. No, I'm, we're talking about underground services, uh, plumbing services that, uh, we gotta talk about. So hopefully we simply do not have the resources to continue the level of maintenance, construction, transportation, technology that we have, we've had historically here. Uh, we, we're gonna have to make some changes and today's not the day for us to even talk about those changes. Today's an awareness conversation. Please understand. At the current rate, uh, the capital, if we don't change the way we're spending our capital funds, uh, we're gonna continue, um, working in a deficit of two point seven million dollars annually. And that's not gonna take very long for that twenty six million dollar fund balance to evaporate. Like I said before, our fund balance over the next five years will go from twenty six five, twenty six million, five hundred thousand down to twelve point six million. Um, that, that's, that's insurmountable if we don't change the way we do business. So, so areas I'd like to focus on today to give you the, once again, I'm trying to give you the current reality and the, and the, and the opportunities for leadership that, uh, that are, uh, were afforded in each of these areas. Um, I'm gonna talk about each of these areas very briefly, but I just wanted to try to capture some of the challenges that we face here, if you don't mind. HVAC, that's our AC, that's, that's our heat and air. Everybody wants heat and air. We all want it, the kids want it, um, and we need to have it. The life expectancy of our HVAC units is fifteen years. Right now, we know we have over thirty two hundred tons of HVAC units that, uh, have exceeded their life expectancy. When you look at the average of a replacement called a light for light, uh, for our non-engineered systems are about three thousand dollars a ton. For engineered systems is about six thousand dollars a ton. When we track away that data out right now, the current reality is we could use thirteen million dollars to bring our HVAC systems up into their life expectancy. To get them to less than fifteen years old. We, we're, we're working beyond that. We're extending these life cycles of our, these life, uh, cycles of our, uh, units. But I will tell you that because we don't have the resources, and I'll talk about a little bit later, uh, the human resources, we're, we're not conducting the preventative maintenance that we once had. Uh, to continue those life cycles, those, those, uh, those units. But we'll talk about that here in a few minutes.
Do we still struggle sometimes to get parts for some of the older pieces?
In about every area that we're responsible for, we struggle to get parts. But we've actually expanded our purchasing options, we're gonna talk about later. That affords us the opportunity to buy parts for some of our antiquated material, uh, antiquated pieces of machinery, whether it's HVAC, fire alarms, what have you. So we'll talk about that here in a few minutes. Roofing, our roofing is fifteen, our life expectancy is fifteen to twenty years. Uh, we have two, uh, two, uh, two point eight million square feet of roofing that we maintain and, uh. And replace in the, in the school district. That's a lot of roof. Uh, in two thousand five, the district hired a consultant to come in and at that time he said, at the cost of two thousand five, we had twelve million dollars of needs. I can't even begin to tell you what that would be in today's dollars. Um, roofs are huge. We know we have to keep roofs on our schools. Uh, we, we, we recognize that. Covered walkways. I want to put this in here because when I first started in this job, I did, I thought covered walkways, you go up, put a couple of poles, put a pan, roof on top of, you're good to go. That's not, that's not correct. Uh, my first year on this job, I went to Alan Burcall, I said, Alan, I said, I got the parents at Christopher Middle School. They're upset because when they drop kids off, there's no cover to walkway and if it's raining, they're getting wet. I said, Alan, we gotta put a walkway out there. And, uh, Mr. Burcall on his, uh, his way, he said, we can actually do it. Just give me the money. I said, well, how much you need? He says, I'll get back with you. Hundred and seventy thousand dollars for, for a hundred foot walkway. Hundred and seventy thousand dollars. These walkways are.
They're still getting wet.
They're still getting wet. Yeah, yeah, I understand. Um, but that, that's the reality. I, I want to bring this up today is because. Four dollars a square foot is what it takes. When you see those metal, uh, roofs and you walk like on bus ranch, what have you, those things are failing. If you walk across our school district, cause I, when I walk on the school district, I, uh, walk on our campus, I have a different perspective. I'm looking at ceilings, I'm looking at floors, I'm looking at walls. I'm looking at things to see where, where we're having issues and we have those rotten all over the, all over the district. That's about four dollars a square foot to, uh, to replace those. Um, that adds up because we have tens of thousands of square feet that we need to, we need to, uh, be able to, uh, replace. Gutters. People don't think about gutters. We're replacing a hundred and thirty foot section of gutters out of Forest Ridge Elementary School this summer. It's costing seven thousand dollars for, for a hundred and thirty feet. Because they're customized, they're, they're customized to the, um, to that building. Okay? Plumbing, kind of touched on that. We have two hundred and twelve buildings across the district that either have, uh, water or gas, uh, systems in them. Some of our buildings date back to the nineteen twenties and we're having significant underground failures. When a pipe breaks underground, there's very few ways you can fix it. When it breaks, if we have a pipe under this floor that breaks, we can identify, we can send a camera down, say, yep, we know where that, that leak is, we gotta go in there and fix it. Was that involved? We're gonna come and take the seats out, we're gonna come take the carpet up, we're gonna come and jackhammer the concrete out, then we're gonna fix that spot. Then we're gonna put the concrete back on, put some more carpet on, then we'll put seats back. And there's no guarantee that age and system is not gonna break fifteen feet down, down the line. When you start talking about doing that kind of work, we're into the many thousands of dollars. Mr. Stokes and I have talked about alternatives to, to solve this issue. There is a, there is a company that will come in and they will actually bore out the, uh, underground, uh, piping. They will come in and they will, uh, they will, under pressure and heat, they will reline those pipes. That's a great process. We prefer that. But we know someone who'd had that done at their house and it costs a hundred dollars a linear.
That's what I was just gonna say. It, it's good stuff. It's not cheap.
When I meet with, uh, when I meet with staff and the staff tells me, Mr. Stokes being the staff member here, um, when he tells me. We are on the cusp of major, major plumbing failures in this district. That concerns me. That's not been one conversation. That's been a dozen conversations over the last year. That's a concern, but this is where we're at. Once again, not doom and gloom. This is, is a challenge that we, we, that lies, lies ahead of us and we will come up with a solution. Okay?
Um, TV, they always have the obsession about pipes, metal pipes failing and the, the.
That's, that's.
That's where we're at. Um, we're talking about the, uh, boilers. Boilers are another thing. We're replacing boilers all across the district for replacement WTC in Citrus High School this summer. About twenty thousand dollars, uh, for boilers. Don't think too much about those. Our lift stations have far exceeded our life cycle. The pumps are failing and then our rail systems are failing within those, uh, um, lift stations. Those are very real issues. This is an interesting one. Electrical capacity. You'll see here in the next couple of slides, I'll show you our five-year work plan and you'll see that we have La Canto High School. Um, electrical upgrade, I think a year after next, if I'm not mistaken, in two years, we're gonna do an electrical upgrade out there to the tune of over half a million dollars for that one campus.
And that's also taking into consideration that you've tried to reduce. The wattages everywhere.
That is correct.
So I, I, I realize that's, that's not even really, you know, understanding the, that aspect.
It, it goes back, it goes back to the age of the service as well. Um, we have services that, uh, in some of our schools that are, they're antiquated. They are. And, uh, Mr. Stokes has been very clear with me. He said, boss, I'm telling you right now, if we have a main service fail. That school is out of power. We are relocating kids. We're, we're activating our COOP plan to provide continuity of services for, uh, our students because that school won't be up in a week. That school won't be up in two weeks. That, that will necessitate customized circuitry and customized product being made specifically for that one school. He said it could be four to six weeks.
It's like a hurricane for us.
That's.
Not without the weather.
That's, that's, that is correct. So we talk, we're not talking about putting plugins in and running wire. That, that's easy. We're talking about the main service into these buildings. So, uh. We'll look that out when we get to the five-year work plan. The demand for electrical needs has increased, uh, it increases, uh, in the main distribution systems as well as the, uh, brand circuitry, such as computer labs. Uh, we are taking countermeasures to try to reduce the demand in each of those facilities by using LEDs and, uh, being smart on what products and equipment we're buying within our schools. Um, but it goes back to the age of the, uh, age of the systems. We already talked about that. When Mr. Stokes and I were meeting, uh, about a month ago, about a month and a half ago on this, I said, you said the replacement costs isn't a million. I said, how certain are you on that? He said, one hundred percent. Then I pulled up the five-year work plan. So La Canto High School, one school is five hundred and some thousand dollars. I said, well, he's right on that. So. The fire alarms and intercom system, uh, systems, uh, those things are not cheap. You know, I, I put this in here because I know the board, you recognize how expensive those systems are. But I, for the community, uh, when we hear about fire alarm systems, they're much different than fire alarm systems we have in our houses. Um, they're very, 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 very costly. Our two most recent projects, you can see they came in at two hundred and sixty and four hundred and forty one thousand dollars. And we were tickled with the four forty one at La Canto Primary School because of the, uh, previous bid that we got. Intercom systems, um, we would like to replace three a year because there's a lot of technology out there in the intercom system that goes, uh, that ties in nicely with a lot of our safety initiatives. And I don't want to talk too much about that in a public meeting, but, um, right now we'll replace them one a year. Here's the most recent cost of our, uh, the two, uh, intercom systems that we're, we're currently working on. So miscellaneous things, I want to point out that maintenance department, facilities department is in charge of. When I got this job, uh, Mr. Calasani came to me and said, hey, he said, boss, he goes, I need to tell you what we got going on at our Citrus High School. I said, yeah, what was that? He said, uh, we gotta repoint that school. I had no clue what he was talking about. I said, what is repointing? So we drove over and he showed me on the six hundred building, that's where Mr. Verdi Rami's room is, was, and there's two other classrooms. That's a small building. Repointing is where, on the brick buildings where you have like the mortar, what have you, in between the bricks, is when that begins to fail. There's a life expectancy on that. When that begins to fail, what you allow for is you, you open yourself up for more sheer intrusion and those kinds of things. And so he said, we gotta. Get this, uh, gotta get this taken care of. They come in, they grind it out, they grind almost all of it out, then they come in, they redo all, all those, uh, uh, brat lines, what have you. I said, John, how much is it? It was over two hundred thousand dollars for that one building. And that's one of our smaller buildings. When you think, when you sit down and you consider Christopher Middle School, when you think of the, uh, Embers Primary School. Uh, we have a lot of money that we need to invest in repointing. A lot of areas that I knew that. This one speaks to me. People laugh at me when they talk about, uh, facilities and maintenance. I, I always talk about parking lots. I, I, cause to me, it just captures it nicely. Uh, ceiling striping and asphalt repair. We have over four hundred, I'm sorry, four million square feet of asphalt surface across the district that we're responsible for maintaining, repairing, replacing, what have you. As you heard Mr. Stokes say earlier, uh, earlier today, that, uh, asphalt has about a five-year, you know, preventive maintenance cycle about every five years. So doing simple math, you have four million square feet, uh, four million square feet and, you know, every five years, that means you should be doing about eight hundred thousand square feet every summer. This year we're doing right at, and it may just be a tick under two, uh, uh, three hundred thousand square feet. So after the summer, we're five hundred thousand square feet behind the eight ball and the, uh. And maintaining our assholes. I tell you that because our parking lots will begin to fail. We, we start seeing holes in them. We'll do the best we can with cold patching and doing those things, but they are going to begin to fail. Uh, there's, there's no doubt about that. So that kind of puts it in, in, to, into perspective. If you can take that concept and apply it to the other areas I've spoken about today, I think, uh, I think it'll. Help clear up some of the, um, uncertainties we're having. Athletics. Right now we have over a hundred thousand dollars needs in athletics, uh, scoreboards, um. That is a, you know, athletics in this community is a major community event. I look back at, uh, when we had the hurricanes and we were, um, we were, uh, out of school for a week and. Christopher High School played Citrus High School on Saturday, um. During the hurricane, that, after the hurricanes have passed and that, that, that was such a great game. Regardless of who won, who lost, it was such a great game because it brought our communities together. It gave our communities an opportunity to think about something other than their power being off for seven straight days or the house being flooded or what have you. So athletics is a high visibility area in this community, whether we like it, don't like it, whatever that case is, that's the reality. We have a hundred thousand dollars in needs, at least a hundred thousand dollars in needs in scoreboards. Um, interior scoreboards cost about ten, uh, ten thousand dollars, twenty thousand for exterior scoreboards, outdoor scoreboards. Because on the outdoor scoreboard, you can no longer go out there and put a scoreboard up. That's easy. Now you have to get it engineered. Now you got to make sure it meets certain wind loads. Now you got to make sure you have the certain, the certain, um, uh, foul, uh, footers to hold it up and all this mess. Uh, but it's all necessary. And when we do things in this camp, in this school district, we're gonna do them right. So we're gonna make sure we have the engineering. We're gonna make sure we have the, uh, proper footing and what have you. I'll tell you a real quick story. Uh, Mr. Stokes knows how I am as far as, uh, making sure stuff's up and operational when things, uh, when, when we have community in our, in our schools. Um, this past spring, Citrus High School had a football game and, uh, Mr. Stokes, without me even asking, went over and made sure the scoreboard is up and running. Well, I, I trust Eric implicitly, so I called Larry, the athletic director, and I said, make sure our scoreboard is working. Larry went down, made sure our school, made sure the scoreboard is working the day of. Eric was over there the day of. That night started off, football game, scoreboard don't work. So I had to sit there and there was a nice young lady, um, sitting to my right down one, one step and, uh, for the entire game, I heard how terrible it is that our scoreboard didn't work and. And how we probably need to do things different in the school district and so on and so forth. And I said, ma'am, they checked it twice. I know for a fact, they don't want to hear that. They want the scoreboard working. So I put that up there because they think it's major community interest. I mean, when those things don't work, that, that's an issue. So, so, I'm sorry.
You know, it affects the reputation of school district.
One hundred percent.
I was at that game too, but you know, and there were, I don't, I think there were a couple of games we went before we got the scoreboard working. We had to order some parts or do something, but just that impression.
Absolutely.
Good for us and you know, and it's great, you know, and we all, you know, we took, we made people talk, we talked about that, you see.
Absolutely.
Um, so I do agree that, um, athletics are important to our community. And, um, you know, so I, you know, that's very much, uh, necessary that we address those things.
Absolutely. Um, so that move, moving forward, because we're, we're matriculating here, uh, next summer, here's the work plan for next summer. Um, I'm just sharing with you so you can see what, you can see, uh, so you can see what's as of right now, what'll take place next summer. I'm sorry. The, the purpose of today is just to make you aware. I, I'm not asking for you to cut anything. I'm not asking for any decisions, any of that stuff. I want to make you aware because there will be future conversations brought to the board.
We don't care if there's holes in the road. We want the scoreboards working.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand it clearly.
Will be noted. Um, here's our work plan for next summer. Um, this will be under review. I, I'll, I'll go ahead and tell you. What makes it difficult to cut things out of next summer will be this. Believe it or not, Mr. Stokes is already working on the necessary paperwork to get the projects up and bring before you guys start next month for next summer. So next summer may be a little tricky to get, to get off, uh, off the plan, but we'll, uh, we'll, we'll bring some recommendations to you. That's what I'm trying to say. Okay? Here's the five-year work plan. Uh, you can see that, uh, in facilities and construction alone, we, we try to hover around four million to four, to four and a half million dollars. Um, every summer, uh, there's La Canto. If you look at under, uh, summer of twenty twenty one, you'll see La Canto electric, high school electrical upgrade at five hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. That's where it's at. So that happened in the summer of twenty twenty one. Um, very costly, very expensive. This will definitely be. One of our, uh, tools that we're gonna review and we'll try to make, try to start balancing this budget because we know we can't work out a two point seven million dollar deficit. So there may be some of these projects that have to get bumped back in order to make this thing work in the long run. I just, I just don't know any other way to do. So there may be some of these projects that have to get bumped back in order to make this thing work in the long run, I just, I just don't know any other way to do it. Transportation, we'll talk about this very, very quickly, the next two sheets are gonna have a lot of information, I'm just gonna talk, don't even try to look at them too closely, and you can, it's not that they're bad, but it's just a lot of information. Essentially, what this, uh, this sheet is before you today is uh replacement cycles. If we have a sixteen year replacement cycle, you can go down to the corresponding year, you go down to the corresponding year to find out how many uh buses would be scheduled to be replaced. If you look at the first one, the sixteen year replacement cycle, let me draw your attention down to twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, you'll see, if we stay at a consistent sixteen year replacement cycle, we're gonna have to replace twenty-nine buses and twenty-two buses. We cannot afford that to come out of one year's capital budget. Okay? So what we've done, um, that sheet there goes all the way up to twenty years, um, replacement cycle. What we've done, what we're currently doing is the top left hand chart that you see here, is we rotate, we buy ten buses one year, eleven buses the next year, ten, eleven, ten, eleven. We allow, or we factor in a two thousand dollar increase in the purchase price of the buses every two years, cause it's on a two-year contract. Um, we feel that this, this better positions the school district over the next, you know, five, six, seven years to not have to come up with three to four million dollars for buses alone. That would, I just don't know how we would manage, uh, the other areas that are fed by the capital budget if we were to do that. The other, the other three boxes there, we said, well, you know what, if we can discontinue buying ten and eleven uh buses in alternating years and only buy nine buses, what does that do to our fleet? The top right hand box, if you see where it says replace nine buses per year, that'd be three buses per compound. If you go down the very bottom of that chart, you'll see that we're, should, at the end of twenty thirty-five and twenty thirty-six, uh, we should have replaced a hundred eighty-five buses, but we've only replaced a hundred and fifty-three. Carrying that down to the next bottom left hand, uh, chart, if we go to only, uh, replacing six buses per, uh, per year, we only replace a hundred and two out of the hundred and eighty-five. And then we'll only replace three buses a year, one per compound, we only, over the next, you know, umpteen years, we'll only replace fifty-one of the hundred and eighty-five. So your bus fleet in the out years would be atrocious. Okay? So that's why we would like to stay on the.
Chip packs then.
I'm sorry?
There's chip packs.
There may be, absolutely. And as I stand before you.
Thrones will come and pick up the children and.
As I stand before you today and talk about what our bus fleet's gonna look like in twenty thirty-five and twenty thirty-six, I just, that's, that's not resonating to me, twenty thirty-five, holy moly. But, it's interesting, but that's where we're at. Transportation, our older, you know, older buses don't have the newer safety features, there's, every year, when buses, while, while buses are being developed, there's new safety features that, uh, that come out. The cost of replacing buses will increase annually, we know that, like I said, we factor in about two thousand dollars every two years. Vehicle lifts, we pay for our vehicle lifts in our bus compounds, we pay for those out of the capital budget, they have a life expectancy of about thirty years. Over here, uh, in our Emerson, uh, garage, we have, uh, the, that lift was put in in the seventies, Chris Rivers was put in the eighties. They by far have exceeded their life expectancy, I can tell you the bus lift we have currently in the Emerson Garage is in need of repair, there's some sort of cube it needs. For that cube is seven thousand dollars if you can find it.
Yep.
And right now we can't find it.
Yeah, that's.
That, that's the issue. Uh, vehicle washes, right now our vehicle washes are within their life, life expectancy, uh, they're, um, they are, uh, expected to survive, if you will, uh, the total of twenty years. Uh, we can't simply pay bus drivers out there and hand wash buses, cause we have to recapture the, the water runoff of the, with the detergents and what have you. So there, we have to have bus washes, um, we know that our bus washes are gonna, are going to, uh, exceed their life, uh, life expectancy. Uh, however, they're not currently under the, uh, senior plan. So that's something we're gonna have to address in the, in the sixteen year plan, is to address those things. And cameras and, and the radios on our buses, we buy, we pay for those out of our capital budget as well, we feel we're in a very good position with cameras and radios at this point in time. Uh, but if we push our bus replacement cycle back, we know those cameras are gonna start failing, and then we have some issues on that side, so. Those are some of the things we, uh, we're gonna contemplate. So we look at core services, core services and transportation, these are the things that we do, these are things we must do as a school district. We must provide transportation in its own, uh, students, we provide transportation to AES, Centenary Renaissance, to all of our academies, and our, our own students that, uh, follow one of those three categories. The other services we provide that aren't funded, and I'm not, I want to be very clear, I am not advocating a request that we do away with two mile ridership, I'm not asking that, I'm just listening, that's the facts. Uh, the other services we provide are the, uh, the, under the two mile ridership, that's not funded by FTE, uh, with the FTE. Uh, the work programs for Crest and, and WTC, the shuttles to and from WTC. And this year we are starting to, uh, to provide transportation from high schools to CF for dual enrollment purposes. Um, we've heard loud and clear from our schools that they believe that some, they would have more kids taking part in dual enrollment if, uh, if they had a way to get there. Maryland's come up with a way that is very minimal cost, very, very, very minimal cost to, uh, to get that done, so we're, we're gonna pilot that this year. Ex-triculator services and field trips, you know, last year we drove just under a hundred and twenty-four thousand miles in extracurriculars and field trips. You know, schools do pay for their field trips, they do pay for their extracurriculars, but they pay for the, the salary and then the fuel alone, they don't pay for the wear and tear on buses. I'm not advocating we charge schools for wear and tear on buses. Um, I'm just saying, sharing with you, while we do charge them, it doesn't cover the total cost of the services being provided. Some of the things we've done to try to offset this, cause you know, Mr. Stokes and I, we've had a lot of conversations over the last couple of years about this, and the, so what are some things we've done? First and foremost, I can tell you the number one thing we've done to save the district money is we're using in-house people, as opposed to using outside vendors. Um, I've talked to about Jody Ennis, uh, he's our camera guy, everybody calls him the camera guy. Um, he, we, we brought that position on, created a new position, and I can tell you that position pays for itself every six months, it does. Does great work, does a little large volume of work, we're doing, we're not hiring contractors come in and, and do some of the simple remodels that, that we're doing within our, uh, within our schools, our guys are doing it. That comes at a cost, it comes at a cost of time cost, it comes at a training cost with our staff, we are sending more staff members out of maintenance department to trainings and, and, and conferences to, so they can become well versed on the new equipment they have at their disposal and better ways and methods of getting the job done, and that's paying off. And I, 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 I highlighted this next piece because it's, it's important and it's true. The quality and quantity of work that's being performed out of our maintenance department is unprecedented, I'm telling you, the work they're doing, um, I, one of the things I look forward to the most this week is Thursday morning. Mr. Stokes and I are going out in the field, we're gonna look at a lot of projects, I would love to be able to give you the list of projects, and if you had time for you guys to pay a visit and see what the work that these guys are doing, it's second to none. I'm gonna lift one out for you, though, one very close by. Go over to Emerson Middle, uh, Emerson Primary School, drive down the bypass and, uh, look at some of the gate work, fence work they've done over there, it is spectacular, and everything was fabricated in-house, okay? Um, we're expanding our purchasing options, what referred to a little earlier, Mr. Kennedy, uh, we're working on purchasing, and we are now cleared to buy through eBay and Amazon. I will tell you, we are buying a lot of product, a lot of product for our antiquated systems on eBay, and that's where we're at. Unfortunately, that's not a replenishable source, you know, once it's gone, it's gone. And so, and we ran into that before with the fire alarm system, a couple, a year before last, I believe it was, we were buying our product, uh, buying our replacement parts on eBay, and once he was out, he was out. So, uh, yes, it's, it's saving us in the short term, long term, it may create some problems for us, but right now we're, uh, we're, that's a major cost saving measure, uh, to open that, uh, that buying option for us. Um, refrigerant gas replacement, wouldn't think that'd be a way to save some money. Uh, we're, we are converting our AC systems from the R twenty-two to the MO ninety-nine, the difference there in cost is this, the R twenty-two at thirty pounds, a thirty pound bottle is eight hundred dollars. The, uh, the ninety-nine is a hundred dollars a bottle, so we're saving that seven hundred, and when you see that come in, that comes in on pallets. If we get massive quantities of that, of that refrigerant, cause we gotta make sure our air conditions are up and running. So that's one of the cost saving measures. Soul source, we're removing soul source requirements for a lot of things, you know, our, our hardware on our, uh, on our doors, I mean, we're, we used to be, uh, um, asset alloy, and now we're using the slave system. When we get away from soul source, there's an impact on that, and the impact on that, there's a good impact and, and there's a challenging impact. The good impact is, now there's some cost savings, we can realize the real cost savings. The negative is, you know, we got one locksmith, and he knows how to work on this type of lock and on that type of lock, now we're gonna take time to send him to try to work on this type of lock. But we're doing it, and, and I think we're, uh, we're meeting the need as, as best we can right now. LED retrofit light kits, instead of replacing the whole light fixture, we're doing these LED strips, they're, they're, they're very, very cost effective for us to do that. Which also saves money on the, on the operational side for electricity.
And they're better on the student's eyes.
They are better on the student's.
They really are, and they're.
And lastly, one of the things we've, uh, started doing is we, we began to prepare earlier for next summer, as I shared with you a few minutes ago. Um, we, uh, we have already started preparing for next summer, and we're not halfway through this summer. Um, we meet with our, our foreman, uh, we have our, what we call C three, our foremen, and Mr. Stokes, uh, meets with them regularly, and we began to prepare. Because the earlier you start planning, the more options you have for buying, the cheaper you can buy the product for. Um, it, it works, and it is saving us a tremendous amount of money. So having said all that, I've talked kind of fast, I've got two slides, they would be, I've got two slides, where do we go from here? Where are we gonna go? In the long term, we can't continue to do what we're doing, we recognize that, we know there's difficult conversations ahead of us, we know that. Um, there's difficult decisions ahead of us, but I believe staff will get together, we'll bring it to the board, I think collectively as a team, we will, we will make the decisions that are best and, and, and meet the need, it's not doom and gloom. If an alternative funding source is not an option, I'm not advocating for an alternative funding source, I'm not asking you to go out to do a referendum, I'm not asking for any of that. But if it's not an option, it's simple, what we have to do, if we can't increase the, the income, we better, we better decrease our expenditures. So we're gonna revisit all areas that are funded by the capital budget and develop a plan moving forward. Uh, we're gonna look at our five year work plan, look at projects out in the out years, and, uh, we have to look at our bus replacement cycle, do that in the most logical way we possibly can. In a way that we can still avoid that year where we had to have, replace twenty-nine and twenty-two buses. One thing I ask the boards is to recognize that in the long term, the absence of, in the absence of preventative maintenance, the cost of repairs and replacements will increase, make no mistake about it. If we're not, if we can't provide that preventative maintenance, those systems, the things that we're enjoying going beyond the life cycle on now, probably won't go as far as they have been going, cause we're not able to provide the preventative maintenance home. And the last one, the, the last bullet here is very important, we just must know and recognize that our facilities will not be of the same standard which we're accustomed to. It can't happen. I mean, we're, we're to that point, our, I see it, cause when I go to, on the campus, I look, I, like I said, I look at things probably differently than most, and I know Mr. Stokes says the same thing. We see the parking lots don't look as good as the parking lots used to. We see the holes in the parking lots, we see the paints faded, we understand that, there's gonna be, in the very near future, there's gonna be a visibly noticeable difference in, on our campuses. I don't have the silver, I, I don't have a magic wand, I can't, I can't, I can't fix it, all they're gonna do is make, make it work with what we have. And that, that's the, that's the takeaway from today. Perhaps we start looking at core services and the, I got, I think, uh, this is my last slide. Perhaps we start looking at core services and only allocate funds for those areas, you know? Core services for roofing, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, I don't know. Uh, core services don't, don't include flooring, paint, scoreboards, those things.
Scoreboards.
I, I got you, I'm with you, I got a lot of clear, but I'll stress that. But, you know, uh, they, those are some of the conversations we have to start having, maybe we start thinking about, okay, where's the most critical to replace air conditioners? I, I don't have that answer right now. But these are the conversations we have got to start having because, uh, in the, in the blink of an eye, we're gonna, we're gonna be without money. That's where we're at. So certainly I'm open for discussion today, this was for informational purposes only for the board to let you guys know that, uh, I feel like we're on top of it, the best we can be on top of it at this point in time. Um, I think I would be remiss of my job and my responsibilities to the, to the district and to the board to, uh, not bring this to, to, this to your attention. Um, but I also think the same comment upon myself and my staff and the, and our team across the district to, uh, bring, bring some plan, uh, plan before the board as well, we'll definitely do that to get your input in, in your direction at a later date.
One of the things though, that, as you went through the slides, um, and it was, it was excellent. But this was a lot about moving forward. And it, and it's important for us to remember, and I want to make sure the public understands, that you've been doing this, I know, for at least a decade. It really became a crunch time when we did lose the two mills, and then we lost Duke. And from that point forward, I don't remember a time that the bus cycle didn't have to get extended. That the driveways, the parking lots, didn't have to wait a year, a two year, the roofs, three and four years. The HVAC, can you make it work a little longer, Eric? Those things you've been doing, and so I say that is, it, it's been remarkable, because I know it's sometimes duct tape and, you know, chewing gum, but if, and exactly. And it's been, it's, it's been tough. Um, that's, so, so this, what you're suggesting isn't, it's really become our standard operating. Which I think you're saying is, we're gonna, it's, it's, we've gotta get even tighter and tighter.
Much tighter, yep.
But it, there was discussion down in Tampa, that school construction was the highest construct, cost of construction in any type of building, they charged schools more. So I think we're probably feeling it in other counties too.
Oh, it is.
That maybe we're still considered a deep pocket because we talk in these large figures in the pool of money, and they think that we're, we've got it all, and they just don't understand, they didn't understand when we tried for the, uh, sales tax, the last time around in sixteen.
No, this, this issue is not, uh, is not isolated in Citrus County, it's, it's, it's across.
It's all over.
Absolutely.
The more we can do statewide, countywide, the, um, paper not deep pockets.
We just need to know and understand that, uh, our buildings and our, our campuses, there is gonna come a time where visibly, this is gonna look much different, no doubt about it.
I was gonna ask a question, I know that we partner with other counties in buying things like the food, that's what the, can we partner with other counties in, say like asphalt? If, uh, Marion County needs so many, a hundred thousand feet, and we need so many, can we partner together to get?
We try to buy a lot of stuff off state bidding, I mean, we do that, off state bidding.
Can we piggyback with other, you know, when they're buying stuff, it'll, Manatee County, and you'll piggyback onto them, or?
Absolutely.
If there's, if another county is doing that, there's certainly.
But even stuff like asphalt, we piggyback still with them?
Asphalt, I can't, I can't say for asphalt, oh, yeah.
But I think the, the best thing that you've done is changing it, is using our own, our own maintenance to, to work.
Absolutely, and, and I can tell you that, that does save money, and it saves a lot of money, but finding, finding candidates for those jobs is becoming increasingly difficult. Because it's much of this for the same reason of the conversation with the board earlier regarding school psychologists. We know psychologists can go out and work in the community and make much more money, our HVAC guys, they can go out and make probably close to double in the private sector than what they're making here. But they do it because of the mission that's, that's presented to them, and that's, uh, that's our school district, our kids, and that's why they do it, they can go make more money working at an independent company, no doubt about it.
But the thing, big thing too, that is not in here, among all the cost savings we need to continue to do, and then more, even more aggressively, we haven't talked about safety and security.
That's right.
Which is a enormous dollar amount, and one that isn't being funded at the state level, we're, we're, we're putting Band-Aids on hemorrhages in some areas. And it's not Citrus County, it's not one of our schools, this is a statewide challenge of how do we meet the, the needs of these recommendations when we have no resources to do that? And our educational funding model is not designed for this, it's not. Um, I, it also is concerning that you look outside of our, our government, and you look at the county. And the number one concern the public often will say that they have is they want their roads resurfaced. And yet, in a recent study in polling that was done, when it said, would you pay for a sales tax to fund that? They said, no. So the number one issue that the pub, the, the voting public says that they have is also the one that they say they will not have for a sales tax. And that's the most beneficial they would probably see direct to them. So that's a challenge for governments like ours to say, I don't necessarily know that there is an alternative source of funding, other than we've already been doing more with less.
Thank you all very much for your time, I appreciated those long, long morning, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Board members, one thing before we adjourn, and it's just something that, I, I, if you would just start thinking about, and I'd love for us to talk about it more in July. It's been a while, you know, Mr. Bishop talked about it, I had it in my notes already, it's been a while since we did a field trip as a board.
We've headquartered.
It's true, but I think, you know, we can take each of our own cars. Um, I'm thinking maybe in, you know, September, in September's workshop, we could look, talk to the superintendent. And maybe that's a day where, um, where we, we see, we, we find out what do we want to see, both, both from a capital side, from an instructional side. And then we could also, we did this before, we could have our board meeting at one of the, the schools. Um, you know, so we don't necessarily have to come back here to have a regular meeting, but if there's any business we need to do, we could do that at one of the sites. Um, but it would give us an opportunity to see it and be able to talk about it together, cause we don't get that opportunity. And if we are going to be dealing with these continual tough decisions, which also impact the classroom and the things going on to the classroom, I think we need to, to have those. If there are safety and securities, if we even need to go into a sage, a shade session at a school to see something, I think those, that may be something we could talk about and, and think about. be something we could talk about and, and think about. So, so, you know.
That would be great because when they were talking about this safety and security that, um, SROs and about, and about the, uh, other safety and security people, my mind was trying to picture, okay, where are they? What are they doing? And to see it would be really good, to see what they are, what they're doing.
And I think allowing us to have that, you know, so something to think about. Again, I'm not thinking like it's tomorrow or next month. I think it's something we need to, you know, have a structure so that we make the most out of those. We don't do them very often, but when we've done them, they have been very, very effective.
And then when you go into a school, and we're talking about air conditioning units